I now call to order this August 26th Friendswood City Council's special meeting and announce that we have a quorum. Tonight's invocation will be led by Pastor Bobby Kirkpatrick with Friendswood Friends Church. So please stand, remain standing after he prays, and we will say the pledges. Thanks, Bobby.
Lord, as we gather for this meeting tonight, I'm thankful for our leaders, for our people that work in the city, and just for the hard work that they put in. And hard work prepping things like budget and budget cycles and all the effort and planning that comes to getting so close to the finish line here for approval. And Lord, we're thankful for the hard work that's been put in. And Lord, as always, we pray for wisdom. We pray for wisdom for our leaders as they care for our city, as they care for our community, and do what's in the best interest of those in our community. And so, tonight, we pray for that. We pray for wisdom and discernment. We're thankful for those that have put in the labor. And Lord, help our meeting to be an example of the kind of civility and care and kindness for one another that you've modeled for us through your son. And it's in your name we pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and invisible. Thanks again, Pastor. See you in October.
It's the double dip.
He's on the list, I think. All right, item four is council comments and reports. Anybody want to say anything on this short meeting night?
I just want to mention the Ice Cream Social is on Labor Day. This is our sixth year?
Eighth.
Eighth year, wow.
Free ice cream.
And free ice cream. It's from 5:00 to 7:00, and it's at the Perry House.
Well, I unfortunately will miss the Ice Cream Social this year. I booked my flight to take off about 5:00, thinking the Ice Cream Social is always from 1:00 to 3:00, but I guess we got smarter because it's too hot from 1:00 to 3:00, so 5:00 to 7:00 is probably smart. So, sorry to miss it this year, but it's great tradition. I don't have any cards up here. I don't see anybody that I don't recognize, so I think I'm going to skip public comment and go right to item six. It's now 6:34 PM, and I call to order this public hearing regarding the proposed fiscal year 2023-2024 municipal budget for the city of Friendswood.
5:34.
Damn it. 5:34. Edit out that other thing I said. So hard looking at your watch. I need a digital watch. This public hearing is -- stop laughing. This public hearing is being held for the purpose of giving all interested persons the right to express their views regarding the Friendswood 2023-2024 proposed budget. Everyone desiring to be a part of this hearing should have signed the list in the foyer. Each participant shall give his or her name and address in order to provide a proper record for this hearing. Rules allow each person five minutes to present information. However, I encourage everyone to be as brief and to the point as possible. I'd now like to request that staff summarize the subject of this public hearing.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This public hearing is required by local government code as well as the city charter to allow for public comment regarding our proposed budget for fiscal year 2024. I'll give a very, very high-level overview of the budget because most of the information we have discussed at our council retreat as well as the last two council meetings. In our proposed budget, the allocation of revenues for the expenditure growth were based on these budget drivers, and we've seen these before. I'll spend a little bit of time on this next slide because it's talking about the changes that we have made to the proposed budget since August 7th, actually. Due to some growing pains that we experienced with our new budget document development software, we discovered that a few of the items that were presented as included in the proposed budget or funded were not included in our expenditure totals, and these were the EMS chief salary and benefits, the Friendswood Parkway traffic impact analysis, and the Brigadoon lane hazard mitigation scoping. So, those items were listed as funded. We didn't have them in our expenditure totals, so we took some time to scour the budget looking for funding to include those things. And so, what you will see in our proposed budget now is an anticipated use of fund balance in the general fund to cover the traffic impact analysis and the hazard mitigation scoping. And we also looked again at every revenue source, and we realized that our inner fund transfer from the water sewer fund to the general fund had not kept pace with the expenditures on the general fund side. So, we did some adjusting of that inner fund transfer to the tune of a little over $600,000 from water sewer fund into the general fund. That allowed for a couple of things. We were able to further reduce our proposed tax rate, so we'll talk about that a little bit more in the presentation. And we were also able to incorporate or add the administrative assistant position that will support the IT department or information technology and our community development department. So, we were able to get that funded as well as take care of those things that were intended to be funded in our general fund. Also wanted to mention one other change to the proposed budget. While we were going through the budget development, we also had a review by the general land office. Auditors paid us a visit, and we completed that review. They were looking at our community development block grant for property acquisitions related to Hurricane Harvey, and so we completed that. And one of the recommendations that the reviewers made was for us to incorporate language in our financial management policy related to the procurement and administration of federal, state, local grants. So, our financial management policy is included in our proposed budget. It always has been, so we took this opportunity to incorporate that language that they recommended that we have, and it'll meet their recommendation. And if the budget is approved, then our financial management policy will be approved with that additional language. Any questions on that? Okay. All right, so now with the revised proposed budget, our overall revenues will be $118.8 million versus the $118.2 million that was presented earlier. And you can see here on the chart the breakdown of those revenues by sources and percentages of the overall budget. Our total proposed expenditures, this is all funds, is now $118.8 million as well. You can see the percentages and the amounts by expenditure category. We'll move over and look at our general fund for the next few slides. Our general fund revenue, proposed revenue, is now $37.8 million versus $37.4 as we previously presented. You will see that there is an increase or a reduction of the property tax amount by $333,000, a little over that amount. And you'll also see the inner fund transfer amount is a hundred and -- or 600, a little over $600,000 more. As I mentioned, we were able to, by increasing that inner fund transfer from the water sewer fund to the general fund, it allows us to reduce our property tax revenue needed to support the budget. So, we had delivered the proposed budget using a tax rate of 50.84 cents. We're able to reduce that to 50.07 cents. So, this is just over three-quarters of a penny, less than what we originally proposed, but it's only 1.3 cents more than our current tax rate. So, that was very fun. This slide also shows the amount of new construction that'll be added to our property tax rolls this year. It also shows that we were just under $200 million in values under protest at the time that our tax rolls were certified. And this tax rate will still allow us to support maintenance and operations as well as our $6.1 million general obligation debt service obligation for the year. This next slide, it's one that you've seen before. It compares the no new revenue tax rate to the tax rate that was adopted in the past 14 years as well as the tax rate that's being proposed for this year or that you will be able to consider for adoption. Our general fund expenditures are about $37.8 million now. This does reflect the, by department, the amount of each expenditure category, and it also reflects the $333,000 in capital improvements. And that's for the traffic impact study and the hazard mitigation scoping. This next slide is one you've seen. It shows the information on our employee merit that's included in the proposed budget. There wasn't a change there. And it also gives some comparative data of our neighboring cities. The next slide shows our forces at work that are funded in the proposed budget. They total about $1.4 million. The next slide is our funded decision packages totaling $1.1 million. They have been updated. This slide has been updated to include the information technology, community development, administrative assistant that we are proposing to add. This next slide is our unfunded decision packages. We have information on the tax rate equivalent if anyone would like that information, but this is what departments identified, but we weren't able to include in the proposed budget because of funding limitations. This next slide is a reference to our change in fund balance. It shows our revenues and expenditures in the general fund, and the trend lines on the slide show what would happen to our fund balance if we were to adopt or if we were to include forces at work in the decision packages in those out years of our multi-year financial plan. Switching gears to our water sewer fund for the next few slides. Our revenues in the water sewer fund did not change, so they remain at $20 million. And this slide shows the revenue sources and percentages. The next slide is our proposed expenditures in the water sewer fund. So, they've increased by the 600, a little over $600,000 for that inner fund transfer because it's an expense to the water sewer fund and revenue to the general fund. So, you'll see that reflected here, and the total expenditures on the water sewer fund are now $19.6 million. Our forces at work and decision packages on these next few slides did not change in the water sewer fund, so our funded forces at work total $1.3 million, or just about. And the decision packages are just a little over $385,000. And this very last slide is our path to budget adoption. So, at the conclusion of this public hearing, council has a few options. You can adopt the budget with or without the revisions that we have suggested. You can make additional revisions if you'd like and adopt the budget tonight, or you can wait to adopt on September 11th. September 11th will be the meeting date for the public hearing on our proposed tax rate. That rate, as I mentioned, is lower than what we had included in our original proposed budget. So, council has the ability to adopt lower than what we published, but you couldn't adopt higher than what we published. So, we'll still be able to make our September 11th date to adopt our tax rate, and then the plan would be to adopt the tax rate on September 11th. So, as always, we appreciate council's support, your guidance, your input, your direction, and just, again, want to thank the city staff, my staff, and city manager for your support as we have worked toward this year's budget development and presentation. Any questions?
Great job, Katina, as always. We really appreciate you and Rhonda, Andrea, all of your staff. Steven in the back hiding. Almost missed you.
Yes.
Great job.
Thank you so much.
You know, we love how conservatively you take an approach to -- when we first talked in June, just to remind everybody, we were talking about a 4.2 cent increase in our tax rate.
Yes, sir.
Today, we're going to approve a budget, and I'm ready to approve this, by the way. We're going to approve a budget 1.2 -- 1.3 cents above what we've held kind of down for the last three years. So, great job. We appreciate your approach.
Absolutely.
It's key to all the work you do. I know it's a lot. So, anybody have any questions for Katina? You're going to ask a question?
I'd just like to echo, that was just amazing. You take us on quite the journey, and I'm excited about where we've landed, so I'm ready to vote tonight as well.
Thank you.
Also, I want to commend you also because it's not just that you got the tax rate down, but you did it with the most recent sell of the large bonds that we just sold. So, being able to cover those bond payments and still do this, it's a testament to all of you and how hard you've worked. So, thank you.
And great property values.
And great property values. Yep.
And I will be happy to vote for my 12th and final budget.
All right. There being no one desiring to speak on this item, I now close this public hearing regarding the Friendswood fiscal year 2023-2024 proposed budget. We now move on to item 6B. Discuss and take action concerning the city of Friendswood's proposed fiscal year 2023-2024 municipal budget. Now ask the city manager, provide council with a clarification of voting options. Did you know that was in here?
I did. As Katina outlined for you this evening, you have the option, you have multiple options, obviously. Adopt the budget this evening with the revisions that were presented tonight. Adopt the budget as originally presented to you earlier this month. Postpone action on the budget until September 11th. So, those are the options before you.
All right, I need a motion. Councilmember Hanks?
Yes. I move that the city council approve the ordinance adopting the city of Friendswood's municipal budget for fiscal year 23-24 as revised and presented this evening, which includes revenue projections of $118 billion, 800, no, $118 billion, I wish it was billion, 841,796, and expenditure appropriations totaling $118 million, 841,796.
I second the motion.
I got a motion from Councilmember Hanks, a second from Councilmember Grifon. Any further discussion? All in favor? Good job. Motion passes. Item 6C, consider on first reading an ordinance amending Chapter 74 Taxation of the Friendswood City Code to add a new article to be numbered and entitled Article 5 Hotel Occupancy Tax to impose a tax on hotel occupancies within the city of Friendswood. Do I have a motion on this item? Councilmember Rocky, Councilmember Branson, who knew, you know, that it would be 2023 before Friendswood needed to institute a hot tax? Other mayors that I see, they say, "What do you do with your hot tax?" I say, "We don't have any hotels, so we don't collect hot tax. I don't know." You know, talk to me next year after we actually start collecting it, and we'll decide what we're going to do with it. But good to have it in the code, and anybody else want to say anything?
Just to add briefly, the hotel occupancy tax can be only, can only be utilized for limited uses, so putting heads in beds.
Kind of like PEG funds.
Correct.
Restricted. Thank you. We'll get to that, though. We'll discuss that when we actually start to collect it. But now, it's nice to have it in our code. So, no more discussion. All in favor? Motion passes. Okay, item 7, Public Improvement District Tax Increment Reinvestment Zone 7A, receive a report concerning the establishment and use of public improvement districts and tax increment reinvestment zones in the city of Friendswood.
So, Mayor and Council, you know, we've been discussing potentially the creation of a tax increment reinvestment zone in public improvement districts for well over a year now. You've had multiple meetings, public meetings with potential developers on the creation of a public improvement district and a tax increment reinvestment zone. This evening, we have two items before you. One, representatives from Bracewell are here to give you an educational component of what TERS and PIDS are, and then later on, if you're ready to act on creating a policy, not establishing a district but creating a policy, we'll have that opportunity to do so under the next item. So, with that, I'll turn it over to Jonathan Frails with Bracewell.
Welcome, Jonathan.
Thank you very much, Mayor Foreman, members of council. Appreciate the opportunity to be here this evening. My name's Jonathan Frails. I'm a partner at Bracewell. I'll introduce my other two colleagues are here. I have Julie Partain, who's another partner who specializes in representing cities in connection with urban and suburban development, and Mary Buzak, who also specializes in that area and is a former assistant city attorney as well. So, we are here to support you and to help you along in this process. We understand you all have been talking about this for over a year, so our goal tonight is to keep this moving. If you want to ask us any questions, feel free to stop us at any time as we're going through this process. We're happy to pause, answer questions, make sure that we've delivered the information you need. There's a lot of information in the presentation. We're not going to read all of it. You've got an opportunity, we just wanted you to have that information that you could review at your own leisure and have for reference materials. So, with no further ado, what is a public improvement district? A public improvement district is a, it is a specific entity that's created over a defined area, either in your ETJ or within your corporate limits. It is not a separate district. It's not a separate entity. It's just a defined area that you're working with. They're created under Chapter 372 of the Local Government Code, and they're a tool in your development toolbox. They are here to help you incentivize the types of development that you want to see as a city. They're frequently used for urban infill projects. That's what we're looking at here. They're often used also in ETJ when you want to incentivize annexation into the city as opposed to utilizing a special district like a MUD or something like that in those areas. Couple of things that I think are really important, and we'll touch on this multiple times as we go through this presentation. One is that PIDS require the consent of property owners. So, the people who are going to be involved in a PID, you've got to have a majority of those property owners involved in it. In this particular case, you'll be dealing with a developer who owns all of the property, and so, he's the one who'll work on that creation. The other item to keep in mind is a PID does not increase the taxes on people outside of the public improvement district or increase the taxes on people inside of the district. A PID finances the infrastructure that are going to benefit those people that live inside of the PID through an assessment that is on the folks that live inside of the PID or have businesses inside of the PID. So, again, these are assessments on property owners who have consented to the creation of these, of this development tool around. So, as we look at it from a next standpoint, we've talked about a lot of these issues already. Once you've created, once we go through the creation process, who get a petition that comes from a developer, there's a publication of the creation petition that goes into the deed records, and that's there to allow property owners to know that they are in a PID, it's forever there, it shows up in all the process, and Julie will talk to you a little bit more about that. But one of the key points here for you guys, this is a tool to help you achieve the development goals that you ultimately want to achieve, and you can use this tool in ways that you can't use some other development tools. Julie?
Good evening. It's nice to be here with you. So, I am a normal, regular, everyday bond counsel, but I do specialize in economic development tools with cities. I do a lot of drafting of agreements, do a lot of PID bonds with cities. Don't represent developers, I only represent cities, just so you know. So, we're going to move through this fairly quickly because I know you guys want to get out of here fairly quickly, but if you have questions, if there's anything that you've always wondered or it just doesn't make sense, do you please stop me and ask me? So, remember that you're, it's like drawing a big circle, right, in the city, and everybody inside the circle is going to get assessed for the payment of infrastructure, and it's your normal infrastructure. It's like water, sewer, roads, parks, you know, open space, that kind of stuff, right? And the way it is pitched in the statute is people are paying according to the benefit they received. So, you'll have a PID assessment consultant, and they'll create what we call a service and assessment plan, and it will say, "This is the benefit everybody gets from putting these improvements in. We're going to translate that into an assessment amount," and you pay that sort of on top of what you pay for your taxes. They can pay, they can be paid at any time. Under Texas law, you can prepay an assessment at any time. So, if you move into a home and you have an assessment and you say, "I just want to pay it off tomorrow," you can do that. That's totally allowed. We have a mechanism in our bond documents that would allow us to call bonds because we always want to make sure that the amount of assessments we're getting in are the same as the debt service on any bonds that we issue, so we have a mechanism for that. They are a lien that runs with the land, right? So, just like a tax, right? It follows the land. It's not specific to the property owner. It sits on the property itself. They are collected and enforced like property taxes, right? So, same penalty scheme, they are due February 1st. You foreclose on them the same way you would as foreclosing on taxes. Jonathan touched on it. So, what I always tell my cities is, this is a way to get a development that you couldn't otherwise get, right? So, you're being more and more limited by the legislature and what you can require. But part of what you can do with a PID is we work through a development agreement, and in that development agreement, you'll negotiate things like development standards and things that you want to see that you couldn't otherwise get in zoning. And I always say, you know, it should be something more than what someone could get if they just abated by your codes and ordinances, right? So, maybe that's better trails, maybe that's larger lots, maybe that's a nicer amenity center or a park or a pool or something like that, something that makes this unique. It can also help construct, help accelerate construction in your CIP plan. It's a way to get some additional revenue. All of these are negotiating points with your developer to talk about. We'll give you a PID, and in return, here are the things that we want. Again, it charges property owners. We'll talk about bonding in just a second. I'm going to skip that till later. So, this is kind of a summary of the benefits and pros and cons. They are a little bit of an administrative burden. I will say, there are three things a city has to do in a PID bond, right? These are nonrecourse debt. You have to collect the assessments, you have to force the assessments, and you have to provide continuing disclosure if there are bonds. Those are really the three things. There are three types of PIDS. One is a pay-as-you-go. I think of this as a cash reimbursement PID. So, this is just, we're going to levy assessments on this property. We're going to enter under reimbursement with you, Mr. Developer, and every year when we get the assessments in, we're going to pay that to you to reimburse you for infrastructure that you put in the ground, right? I see a lot of those. That's not generally what a developer wants. He's going to want the benefit of bond financing because that gets him money faster, and that's sort of the plus for him. You can have a reimbursement bond PID, which is, it's really more timing. It's really more, well, you put some infrastructure in the ground, and maybe once you've got so much in the ground or you have so many lots ready, then we'll issue bonds and we'll reimburse you for the cost, right? That is especially helpful in the market. The market sees that there's value in the ground already or there's lots already there, and you can often get a little bit lower interest rate for that and more interest from the buyers. There's also a construction bond PID. I call this an upfront pit, right? This is when you issue debt based on bare land, right? There's nothing out there. Generally, the developer is the sole property on there, a little bit riskier from the market standpoint, but it also depends on your developer, who they are, how well they're funded, how well they're known in the development community. This is the golden egg for the developer. He wants that money upfront. That's very, very valuable to him. So, in any other financing mechanism like a water district, he would have to wait over a long period of time to get reimbursed. This gets him money sooner, very valuable to him. That gives you some negotiating leverage there. PID debt. PID debt are nonrecourse, which means they're only payable from the assessments levied on the property owners. They can, the bondholders could never demand you pay it out of your ad verum taxes. They are not paid from that. They are only paid from the assessments levied on the property. It doesn't reduce your bonding capacity because it's not general obligation debt, right? So, it doesn't affect your bonding capacity. You keep all of your ad verum tax, all of your sales tax revenue. It does count against your qualified bank limit, your $10 million, but that, we can have, we have a mechanism in our development agreements that makes the developer pay the interest differential if issuing PID bonds forces you out of bank qualified debt, which is generally a little bit lower interest rate. They're sold to a limited number of investors. Because under state law, you can call, you can prepay your assessment at any time, it means that we have to be able to call those bonds at any time. So, there's only maybe a dozen of big bond, high-yield bond funds who are interested in this. So, because of that, we do a limited offering memorandum, and the rate is a little bit higher, right? Anytime you have a smaller pool of buyers, the rate is a little bit higher. The annual installments, which is what we charge annually, will be enough to pay debt service on the bonds plus administrative costs. So, I get this question a lot. Well, what happens if there's a default on the bonds? It really means that property owners didn't pay, right? They didn't pay their assessment, so there's not enough money, and that's not likely to be reflected in your rating. It's really more a financial advisor question, but I've not seen it happen because, again, these are nonrecourse debt. They're not going to be paid back from your property taxes. Again, your obligation, you have to enforce it, which means you would have to foreclose on people. Foreclosure is often an option with you on your, when people don't pay their taxes. It would not be an option in this. You would covenant with the bondholder that if people don't pay, you would foreclose on their property. And the bond, the bond issuer contains several reserve funds so that you, you know, have a fighting chance of paying the debt service before a payment default hits you. So, PID creation administration. What we typically recommend to our issuers is when you start negotiating with a developer, enter into agreement with them and tell them that they need to put up some money to pay your professionals. You don't have that kind of money sitting around. You just passed a budget. You don't have a line item for paying for these kinds of costs. He can get that money back out of the bond issuance, but it really should be his upfront cost, and so, we routinely do that with our issuers. You will hire a PID administrator to handle this for you so that you don't have to handle it yourself, and they are paid out of the assessment. So, I always think the assessment kind of has three components. It has principal. It has principal, interest, and administrative costs, and that's what you pay your professionals from. Jonathan went over this. These are, this is not a separate entity. You are the PID. I'd like to say PIDs are us. That's who you are. Associated with your obligation, again, you have to collect and enforce the assessment, and you'll have to enter into continuing disclosure agreement if bonds are issued. Your continuing disclosure agreement will be things like delinquencies, foreclosures, what's in the bond fund, stuff like that. The developer will also have to enter into a continuing disclosure with the market, and it will be related to development. How many lots did you develop? When did you deliver them? How many, what's your sales price for all of those? Those kinds of things. There'll be two continuing disclosure agreements. It's not just you. You will hire a PID administrator who will do all these things on this list for you. They will handle all of that for you. They will create, in a PID, when you develop this plan that levies the assessment and spreads benefit, we call it a service and assessment plan. It has to be updated annually. They will do that for you. They will interface with the county. You want this to be on the county tax bill. They will do that for you. They will handle, they will let you know when someone is delinquent. I mean, they will know all of that ahead of time, and they will interface with the developer for you. And again, they're paid out of administrative costs of the PID, so you don't have to put that in your budget. I just said that. I get asked this a lot, too. So these are your bonds. If you issue bonds on a PID, the proceeds that you get go into a trustee, but it's your money. The trustee will only release that money pursuant to you. So what typically happens is that the trustee will hold the money. A developer will say, here are all my contracts, and here's all my bills for putting in that road. The PID administrator will verify all that. She'll cross-check it. She'll talk to your public work people, make sure everything's been inspected, that all bills have been paid, and then the city will sign something that says to the trustee that says, yes, we're okay to make this payment to the developer. So you are in control of the money. It's typically a 90-day-plus process. There'll be multiple actions. I think you come to the council at least three times, maybe four, before you get to the end of the process. I get to ask this question a lot. Well, what happens in the worst-case scenario if people don't pay their assessments? So again, there are reserve funds in a bond deal, which you would draw on to make the payments of debt service. You would foreclose, you would start foreclosure on the delinquent property. The foreclosure proceeds would be used to redeem bonds. Now, again, you are holding the money for the improvements, right? So it's not that you won't get the public improvements. You will. You've bonded for that, right? You have that money.
You're holding the money for the bonds if the people who are assessed pay it.
No, you're always going to hold bond proceeds.
Okay. Okay, yeah, because we issue the bonds.
That's right. You issue the bonds.
And then we ask the assessor, the people who are assessed to pay it.
Right. It's just like your GEO bonds, right? You sell them in the market, you get the proceeds, and they go in your construction fund. It's the same thing here. So you'll hold the proceeds, and I didn't mention, but the way assessments work, if for some reason, you know, there's a market cap, right, on how much somebody will pay for a home. And let's say the developer says, I really need, I got $20 million of public improvements. I really want my assessment to get me $20 million. You do the math and you say, hmm, you know, $20 million of assessments would make that home unaffordable. The tax rate would be really high, so we're going to, we're going to, we're going to lower the assessment, but the public improvements still cost $20 million. So, Mr. Developer, we're going to require you to put in the difference at closing so that we have a pot of money fully sufficient to put in all of the public improvements. That's your money. It'll get in. You'll get the public, you'll get the roads and the streets and the park or whatever. What you might not get in a default situation is the development, because that means the developer has done something that's not going to allow him to finish the lots, right? You'll get the public improvements. It'll be there for the next person, but you might not get the development that you bargained for.
If you have to foreclose on, say, an individual property, who's up to bat first? The mortgage company or the?
It's a really good question. So what I have seen happen, and it's rare, I've not, I've not, I don't know that we've had a default that I know of in the state. I did have a PID where the developer went bankrupt. He did not develop the lots. So the city began the foreclosure process. Now, he had financed that land, so the bank had a mortgage deed of trust on the property. Remember, there was a slide way back that said that the assessment lien is superior to everything except property taxes, right? So it is superior to a bank's mortgage deed of trust on a piece of land. So in that particular case, what the bank did was it foreclosed on him under his loan documents, took ownership of the property, and began paying the assessment, because otherwise they'll lose their mortgage, they'll lose their interest in the property, they'll lose their collateral. And they continued to pay it until they sold the property to another developer who continued on with the development. That's often what happens.
So if I understand it, so the taxing authority is the first?
Correct.
And then the PID and then the mortgage company?
And then the mortgage lender, that's right.
Okay.
That's right.
I got, I got a question. And this might be a, this might be a morat question. So you mentioned like the $20 million.
Right.
So obviously, these are a case-by-case.
Correct.
Does the developer, is this, once we get this in place, does a developer come to us with a project, and then we evaluate the process to figure out the amount and see if it's feasible? Like, who's involved in that process?
Your financial advisor and your PID consultant.
Okay. Okay. As I was thinking, I mean, you made a good point. $20 million, they could put such a big assessment where they never sell anything.
Well, and they're incentivized, too, right? He doesn't want to make his homes unaffordable, and he will likely have contracts. If they're not already in place, he will be negotiating contracts with builders, and those builders are not going to overpay for those lots, right? So he has a cap he's working under, but your financial advisor and your PID assessment consultant will run through, and Mary will talk about the TERS in a minute, will run through all the scenarios and do the spreadsheets and figure out, also figuring out like, okay, well, if we put a PID assessment, that's kind of the tax equivalent rate of, I don't know, 10 cents or whatever, and that puts our total tax stack at, I don't know what your total tax is around here, $3. And they'll look at surrounding developments and see, okay, well, if somebody were going to look to buy a house in this area, if they bought it here in Friendswood in this PID, would they pay a dollar more than they paid to somebody in the next city over? They'll look at all of that to figure out where the sweet spot is with respect to selling that. And your developer is incentivized to be on board with that. Otherwise, he can't sell, what's the point if he can't sell the lots, right? Or can't sell it to a builder. So that's all part of the sausage making.
Okay.
Figuring out what makes sense. And that's in the development agreement. Like, we'll bind him to a tax stack. We'll bind him to how much he can charge. We'll limit him to the amount of the public improvements. All of that is written down. So we put as tight a box as we can around that developer and what he can do.
The other thing I would mention is when you're doing a development agreement, that's something we work very closely with city administration, and that development agreement actually has to come to council and be approved by council as well. So you all have full visibility into these types of projects as they come, and it'll be very transparent to everyone involved.
Right. It's a collaborative process. You know, we've done this quite a bit with a lot of different PID consultants, so kind of know what the hot points are and sort of what you need to watch out for with a developer. And all the things that you want from them, including, we want certain setback, or we want a enhanced trail, or we want a park, or all of that will be drafted into the development agreement, so it's a contractual obligation of the developer. If you do a PD or something like that, we like to attach it to the back and bind it to him contractually as well as going through the city process. We try to, we try to put a box around him as much as we can to get what you want out of the, out of the whole deal, for sure.
I have a question.
Sure.
So I know in the negotiating phase, we could ask for a study of the land, for instance.
Sure.
And, but at the other end, if after it's being developed, there's, people discover that there's something toxic on this land, what kind of recourse or what kind of responsibility does the city have?
Well, you don't own the land, right? You don't own the land, so you don't have any. But I will say, when you issue bonds, there's a big document. You know how you, you've probably seen official statements that the city does when you sell your GEO. There's something like that. We call it a limited offering memorandum. These bonds are sold only to sophisticated investors. They are not sold retail so that anybody's mom or dad or cousin can buy it. They're sold in a limited offering, and it's an extensive disclosure document that walks you, really, most of the disclosure in the document is about the developer, his ability to develop, his ability to have money to develop, what the property looks like, what the houses are going to look like, who the builders are, all that stuff. And in there, he will have to have had a Phase 1 done, environmental study done by that, right? And he has liability if he sells that to a builder. That's really contractual, but you don't own this land, you don't own this property. It'd be like, you're not responsible for land that you taxed with your abhorrent tax if it has hazardous materials on it. But that is disclosed in the official statement.
So if you, if we were to require a Phase 1, and as I understand, a Phase 1 uncovers something, can we require that you have to go to a Phase 2, Phase 3, whatever is necessary?
You can always, you can always draft that in your development agreement, but odds are, if he's borrowing money from a lender, they're going to require all of that, and he's going to have to disclose that to his lender and to his builders who are buying the lots from him. So that's all going to get taken care of that way.
Can these environmental studies be paid for out of the PID funds?
No, he needs to pay for that privately.
Okay.
Yeah.
And just as a matter of clarification, without a PID or without any sort of tax increment reinvestment zone, we cannot require a developer to provide those environmental reports if they're developing property that's already zoned for the allowable use. So this allows us some additional leverage to ensure that that added safety measure's in place.
I will say, so typically, the assessment will go on the county tax bill. That's the best place to put it. That way, it gets paid. Sending an individual mail is an administrative nightmare, plus you worry about people not paying, right? And that's important to the bondholder. They want to make sure people pay. The amount that you, the amount that you assess, in addition to making it marketable, for the bondholder, the ultimate security for the bonds, let's say, worst-case scenario, the developer, I don't know, retire a RUBA within six months and he's out of the picture. The bondholders want to know that if you had to foreclose, that the value of the land is sufficient, that you could get enough money to pay the taxes owed and the assessment and pay them off. So the value of the land is important, and that leverage between the value of the land versus how much assessment you're putting on it is something that we negotiate and we put into the document as well. We get an appraisal on the land so that we know, you know, you don't want to levy, you know, you don't want a one-to-one levy, right? That doesn't make any sense for, and you won't sell, that won't sell well in the market anyway. So those are some of the constraints that we put on developer and the financing of it. There are conditions to issuing bonds, all kinds of conditions, things with respect to what they have to provide, what the numbers have to look about, look like. There are conditions, there are timelines. We put all of that in a development agreement to sort of, again, box him, box him in. And we also work, Jonathan mentioned, when you create a PID, it's filed in the property records. When you levy assessments, that levy, that assessment ordinance and that big service and assessment plan that I talked about that lays out the benefit to everybody and says how much the assessments are, that is also filed in the property records as well. It's required by law. We also, your PID assessment consultant will work with the developer to make sure that notices go out. We can put things in the development agreement to require signage and all other kind of stuff so that you be sure that anyone that buys a house out there is well aware of what they're buying into when they buy it, so that you don't have to worry about, you don't want them to come to you later and say, I didn't know, even though that's just because people don't always look at everything they sign when they, when they close their house. But we can put some special measures in the development agreement to make sure people understand when they buy that they're buying as part of this PID. And that, that's the other thing. For people to want to buy something where they're paying your tax rate plus an assessment, it needs to be special, right? It has to have stuff out there that they wouldn't get anywhere else, and that's why they do it. So that, I'm done with the PID. I'm not going to come back. I think Mary can finish this out, probably with TERS.
Yeah. Julie, one thing that I would just add on this is the, you will have a PID policy that you're going to talk about after this. A lot of these best practices that Julie's talked about in the course of this on tax stacks, how you, how you would incentivize, how you deal with bonds, what kind of tax rate would be eligible, what kind of lien-to-value ratio, those types of things are all incorporated into the PID policy that you're going to see. So administration took a look at all of these types of issues, and when they were putting it together, they wanted to make sure that they had a, something that would protect the city and also inform developers as they came to talk to you about what your expectations as a city were. And so that's the purpose of the policy that you'll see after that.
Correct. Yeah. Because once you, once you do one, you'll have another developer wants it. Again, it's a valuable negotiating tool for you. It's just a tool in your toolbox. You choose when you use it and when you don't use it. Some developments it'll make sense, other developments it won't, right? So that's kind of, but at least with a policy, a developer knows what to expect, and he can ask you upfront for what the exceptions are. That way, you're not ad-hoc-ing it from development to development. You have a consistent, a consistent baseline. So Mary's going to talk about the TERS and how the TERS, sure.
So when we write the PID, are we able to give descriptions of where we want, say, the roads to go or the tie-ins to the existing roads?
Of course. They still have to develop in, within your standards, like your, your construction standards and your codes and ordinance with respect for water and sewer. And what we do is make sure that everything they want to pay for has been through your public work department, and everybody has signed off that yes, because at the end of the day, you're going to own it, right? And so you want to make sure they build to your standards, and they build it where you want to build it, the size you want to build it. There's also an opportunity in your PID to maybe get some oversizing. Now, you'll have to pay for that, because again, you can't make people in the PID pay for stuff that benefits other people. But it would be a way to get that done sooner versus later. That's when we talked about maybe getting your CIP advance it. You could get some of that done early versus later, but all of that goes into the mix, yes.
And what about if, can you put things in the PID that would say, during the construction, if they damaged, say, existing roads? Okay, so you're going to run a bunch of big trucks down our current, our current residential streets, and if they damage those, can, can the PID put requirements in there that?
You can put requirements to the developer, because it's not the PID that's damaging it.
I understand. The developer, but you can put those requirements.
Yes, generally, there's language in our development agreement about if they, if they damage something, that he would have to pay for it, yes. And they have, he has to get performance bonds and all that good stuff, because ultimately at the end of the day, these are your improvements, right? And you're going to own them at the end of the day. So you manage that construction, you inspect them, all of that stuff. That's all still, still part of what you do. It's just an alternative method for delivery of the improvements. Anyway, Mary's going to talk about TERSs and about how TERSs are an offset to the assessment, which again, is a very valuable tool for a developer. But if anything comes up that you think about that you didn't think to ask me, just raise your hand. I'm happy to answer.
So as Julie said, a TERS is another tool in your toolbox. It's often used as an overlay with a PID. It is a financing tool that allows you to use the tax increment revenues in a defined geographical area to pay for public improvements in that area. So when a TERS is created, what you're doing is you're setting the base-year value of the property that's included in that area. And then any increment that is generated, you know, year-to-year over that base-year value is increment that is available for use to go back in to reinvest into public infrastructure in that area. And so one of the things that you can do is decide how much you want to contribute out of your tax increment back into the zone versus into your general fund. And so once your TERS is created, and you know, we have a slide up here kind of outlining basic steps in the process that are governed by statute. But once that happens, a project plan is developed for the TERS. And that is basically your sources and uses of funds, what you can spend your increment on, how much you think you're going to generate, and what are the projects that you're going to invest in. And this slide just shows basically how it works. Once you've set that base-year value, that, you know, you've got a split between how much you're contributing back into the zone versus how much you're retaining for your general fund. And, you know, you can contribute up to 100% or you can contribute any amount underneath that. So it's in your discretion what you think you need to do and how much you think you And big picture, you know, I think we've sort of covered this, but it's a way of using your increased property revenues to invest into your zone and to make sure that you have infrastructure that can pay for the development that you're trying to generate. So you can decide how much you want to use to participate back into the zone. And you are using your project plan, plan as your blueprint for what you're going to use it for. And the reason that we're talking about it today is because one of the things that you can use tax increment revenue for is to offset your PID assessments. And this is just a slide to kind of show how that looks.
Yeah.
Yep.
So, and just to kind of close it out, who's on the, it's important that as a city, you have people representing you and looking out for your interests. These are the folks who are generally on your team, working through this, your financial advisor, bond counsel, city attorney, PID administrator, and dissemination agent. We will all work together in order to help deliver a project to you that is going to be a successful project and executes on the goals that the city, the city lays out. So we appreciate, again, the opportunity to be here and talk to you this evening. Any questions come up, please do let us know. Even if they come up later, we're happy to, happy to answer them as you've had time to digest this and think about it. Thanks.